Here.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Capria.
Here.
Counselor Judy.
Here.
Counselor Spizito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Here.
And Counselor Whitehead.
Here.
I have a motion to approve the August 7, 2012 Regular Water Pollution Control Authority.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Whitworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Here.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Capria.
Yes.
Counselor Judy.
Yes.
Counselor Spizito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
And Counselor Whitworth.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda Item Three Correspondence Citizens Statements. Item Four Unfinished Business Discussion and Action. Item Five New Business. Item A White Hollow Sewer Deferred Payments.
Mr. Mayor, the residents in the White Hollow area are allowed to request a sewer deferral project, I'm sorry, payment for those payments due in October and January. Our assessor did go through and get in touch with everyone. We've had two requests for those sewer deferral payments which have met all the criteria. And if you wish to move forward, you should need to approve those to move forward for tonight. And we still would receive the payment on these once the properties were sold. So it's not like you're giving money away or anything like that. And our assessor and our town engineer here, in case you have any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a sewer deferral payment for the following addresses. Fifty-two Blue Trail Drive, Northford, and forty-seven Blue Trail Drive, Northford.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Keanu R.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Capria.
Yes.
Counselor Judy.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Bucci.
Yes.
And Counselor Whitworth.
Yes.
Item Six Citizen Statements and Petitions. Regular Town Council Agenda. Item Seven Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Item A Economic Development Commission.
They're not even in the meeting since the last one. They're meeting next week as of the holiday.
Item B Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent Project Building Committee met last month and bids were, the bid was out for the STW conversion. The bids were opened on August 17th, and we will be reviewing those at our meeting next Monday and then making a recommendation to the council at the 9:18 meeting. And that's it.
Item C Potato and Corn Festival.
I don't know if we have a representative from the Potato and Corn Festival here this evening. What you have attached is really just the preliminary expenses and revenues which you were looking for. For the 2012 Potato and Corn Festival, obviously not all the bills are there, but we're almost here. At your next meeting, I will have a full report for you and will wrap, but right now it'll be very positive.
You're gonna have a breakdown on all that miscellaneous stuff that cost $90,000?
Yes, and I also have a breakdown of all the different expenses, because I want to make sure you know all the expenses that the town has put in that are not reimbursed, just so you have a good sense of the cost.
And all the categories on the report, every category, you'll have breakdowns of all of them?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Item D Emergency Communications Committee.
The committee met last week and we're waiting for some information from the state regarding costs and also South Central regarding revamping their commitment. So we should have those shortly.
Thank you. Finance Committee Auditor David Capaletti.
Yes, our auditor is with us this evening. Just to go over before he starts his word what issues or things you may want to take a look at during the auditing process. With that, Dave, we can turn it over to you.
Hello. For those who don't remember me, my name's Dave Capaletti. I'm the auditor for the financial statements for the annual audit. And I came here last year about this time, and we shared some thoughts about some of the risks and questions that you might have or things that you wanted me to take a look at. So I thought I'd just give you a quick summary of some of the things that I'm going to probably take a look at in addition to the regular audit. And if you have any questions or any concerns with the audit or any concerns going forward, if you could, we could talk about that, if you wanted me to direct my audit in a specific area.
You can move that microphone up so you won't have to.
Thanks.
No, you can take it out of the.
Yeah, it's very better. Okay, thank you. Some of the places that we left off last year was with the Board of Education, specifically the Family Resources where a lot of money was taken out at one year. And I recommended that they, you have a capital improvement fund that they put their surplus in and it be calculated on an annual basis so that the buildup would not be, go on for a long period of time as if it happened last year. But one thing I do want to check is to see if the surplus is still going on and what's the cause, what's the effects of taking the large amount of money out of that fund to see if the education has changed their methods or if that's still needed. The other thing I'm going to look forward on, try to catch things before there's a problem, as you did, a significant change to the budget of the Board of Education where they're gonna, it's gonna be, their budget for 2012, '13, as if I read it correctly in the minutes, would be a, include the excess costs. And I just want to make sure that this is done properly and recorded properly. What I've seen before with this happening in other towns and cities is that a potential surplus builds up if money is transferred. And I talked to your finance department briefly on this, and it looks like it's being done properly, but those are just some concerns that I'll have that I've seen problems in other areas. As far as the town, this, you have a, this is your first year with a newer grant list as far as the appraisals. And so what I like to check with those is significant changes. If there's any potential problems in that area, it's basically with the change orders which would show up on your long-term third-party appraisals. And so what I'm going to be looking at there is, one, the effect of that appraisal. Did it have large changes prior to it? And then also, is there large changes afterwards? And if that, then it'll show a potential problem. I know also that you guys, that you talked significantly about the suspense list. And just to reassure you on what my job is on suspense lists, this is an area also where it's pretty much the only way legally that the tax collector could take a bill off the tax list without collecting cash. So it's a significant part of my audit. And what I usually do is look at it over a long period of time, compare it for two or three years. And what I'm looking for is reoccurring names or any problems that I see in a reoccurring. And also, I want, don't want to see any real estate. So like I said, the suspense list has looked at me very carefully. And I know also that you had additional work performed in the tax collector's office and the assessor's office. And I wanted to read that to see if it shows me any significant areas that I'd like to go in. With that, quick summary of what I'm planning to do on the larger issues, besides my conversation with the town manager, which we'll also talk again, it'd be interesting to see what a new executive will see in this town. Is there anything that significant that people, that the council is, would like me to take a look further in or that there is any questions with?
Dave, can you explain that excess cost with the Board of Ed, again, just so I can get in my mind what you meant by that?
Okay.
What excess, they have a budget. You mean if they spend or get something over that?
Yeah, an excess cost grant is a camp, it's a grant that is associated with the Cost Sharing Grant. It's from the state of Connecticut. This is the first year, I believe, that the town has added that into the budget for the Board of Education. Before, you used a fixed amount and it wasn't dependent on the amount that's going to be received as the excess cost portion of the Cost Sharing Grant. This is the first year that I know of that that's going to be included. It'll be netted against this.
What have they used it for before? How have they used it?
Yeah, before the excess cost came in as revenue to the town and the Board of Education's budget was at a fixed amount.
This is the excess cost on special education?
Yes.
That we've gotten every year?
Yep, you got that every year for yes.
Is that the only grant that we?
That's the only grant that I know of that is netted against the, yeah, against the.
What was the amount on that? Is that the one that was 300 and some odd thousand this year?
That sounds correct.
Is that the one we're speaking?
Yeah, but it's, I think it's coming in at 400 and some thousand dollars according to the article that was in the paper.
That's, yeah, over the last 10 years, this is a grant that has, one of the grants that have grown. So it has become a significant grant in the last 10 years or so. Prior to that, it has always been a small amount. And it's basically, what makes up the excess cost is the, it, on the subject that certain students cost more than the average student. And so what the state has a formula to calculate this out, and they provide additional funding for these students.
Now, that funding that comes in is used for the close student, so explicitly?
Yeah, there's no, there's no, it works similar to the cost sharing where it's based on a formula and not on specific expenses.
But when you audit it, you can see what, how much they got and how much went to pay for how much of the special ed program?
Not necessarily. Yeah, there's no requirement for them to have that, that I know of. So you're saying, could I relate the revenues with expenses?
Don't they have to report what they spent it for a special ed?
On several different grants, that's correct. But this is one of the grants that doesn't work that way. But it does work, it's a formula grant, so it's basically based on a formula, for the most part.
And what about the suspense list you moved to that?
Yes.
Do you see that every year?
I look at yours every year. Every town and city in the state of Connecticut has a suspense list. It's that portion that is believed to be uncollected by the state, by the tax collector. Major reason is for suspense lists that you see is people move out of town without finishing up paying their vehicle expenses, businesses going out of business, estates. And so at this point, the tax collector believes that he has used all of his resources, cannot collect this taxes. And the oversight for that under state statutes is to have a public meeting to approve that suspense list. And so you being the public meeting. And I know that I'm on my own public meeting, I'm on the Board of Finance of my own town, and they give me a list, and it's very difficult to look at and to approve within five minutes. And I just want, I, you know, I hope my auditors do the same as what I do, is I take several years of suspense lists and I compare them, and I look for same names, same, any type of trends that shouldn't be there, make sure that everyone on that list is what it is. It's an exhausted, uncollectible account. And unfortunately, every year there is taxes that can't be collected. It's a, it's a.
Who does your auditing? You or do you have people that do it?
I can't do my own audit, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so they're all CPAs, obviously, right?
Yes, yes, yes. We're actually in, looking for a new CPA.
I've been on, this is my third term. I've never heard of a suspense list until maybe three or four months ago. You've never heard of it in your reports ever either. There was a name on that suspense list for eight years straight, and I wanted to know why. And they still live around here. Everybody knows where they live. And I want to know who puts those names on the suspense list.
Yeah, no, I would like to talk to you and get that name and take a look at it. Because that's the things I'm looking at.
Obviously, if you look at the list every year, you would see that same name every year.
Yeah, yeah. The, if it's motor vehicles, it's, tends to be very long from the state of Connecticut. So if I'm missing it, it might be of a small amount.
It's not really a small amount.
Yeah, well, I'd like to take a look at it, and those are the things that I'm meeting tonight about.
Right, well, that's what you need to take a look at, and we've never heard of before. My eyes were open about three or four months ago, and that's what prompted this whole policy and procedure thing with the tax department and everything, because something doesn't smell right to me.
All right, well, that's a place that we should look further into.
And you look at the operations and procedures of our tax department, or you just look at all the numbers and see if they add up?
No, 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 we actually do the internal controls. What I've never done there, though, is a performance audit, which I have done in other towns to see if your collections are suddenly down, then what are the reasons why it's so down? But I don't do that as part of my audit. I make sure that the, that the internal controls are proper so the, the numbers are correct and that the money's being collected properly.
Well, I wish I had heard about the suspense list when I first started. We might have been able to cut this whole deal a little shorter, but we'll wait and see what happens.
Okay, yeah, no, I'd like to talk to you, get to those names, and let's take a look at what you're looking at. We'll dig further into it.
Absolutely.
Just a quick question now, since you have a Board of Finance, since you sit on your Board of Finance for your town.
Yes.
Where's your suspense list go?
Where does my suspense list go?
It goes to Marshall?
No, it's after the Marshall has gotten it, and the Marshall is also.
Okay, then what happens after the Marshall?
Well, once it goes to a, in my own town?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, in my own town, I just went through it and changed the process and to see who wasn't paying it, because we were having a collecting, collection issues. And previously, we, the tax collector would try, and then if she hadn't no luck, then we would send them to the Marshall. The Marshall would try to collect. And at that point, we had, our town was small enough where we just stopped. But what we found, we had a large suspense list, well, it wasn't a large suspense, we have a large uncollectible list, but these things were never, I would never allow any real estate on the, on the suspense. And as this stuff became larger and larger, I stopped in and took a look at why. And basically, what it was is two things, was investors buying property and trying to flip houses, basically, were unable to do it and were unable to sell it. So they kind of, they didn't want to be there. And also, businesses going out of business but owning property that wasn't able to sell their property. And in this situation, what we concluded is that even though it's difficult, a tax sale is helpful, sometimes to a landowner. And the reason why is that I looked at some of these things is that the taxes that were owed with interest and penalties were almost equivalent to what they could sell the property for. And I think a lot of people wished that this tax, tax sale happened way, you know, a long time ago. So we changed it to any business type of organizations who have more difficulty collecting on a business because of the risk of them are going out of business. We made it more strict, made the tax sales come quicker. So, and it's been helpful for us.
Now, what'd you do with your motor vehicle side of it?
Motor vehicle side is difficult. And what we did with that, though, is that we did have a personal property tax audit, and we were able to triple our personal property tax with businesses. Most of it was in education. People out there just didn't realize that they needed to pay taxes. We also had a, a couple businesses that, that was most of it. So we were able to triple our, our personal property tax. As far as our personal property taxes to the motor vehicles, as far as people moving out of town, there was, like I said, there was two, two ones that I saw where the people moving out of town, we just couldn't locate them. And the second one was estate sales. And I took the estate sales off until the estate was closed, because I think you still have, have an ability to collect taxes there. And then the ones that were, you know, they're small enough to tell, determine if people have moved out of town and cannot be reached. And at that point, they may have sold their house, their car. Once they sell their car, there's no collecting the taxes because they have no, the, one of the deterrents, one of the reasons why you want to pay your property taxes is to be able to, yeah, have your motor vehicle re-registered, registration. Once you lose that ability because they sold their car, then you, yeah, it's very difficult to get someone to pay.
So in your experience, after the Marshall fails to collect or can't collect, does it go to a collection agency?
What we do is talk, is, we don't, what we do has been tax sales simply because it's been, and you might be in the same situation. The larger cities would use a collection agency because they have a, much, as far as numbers of collections. But here, I would think if you looked at your grant list, is that you might have a selected few, that once they were either with a tax sale or paid off, then, you know, it would transfer property if that's, in our situation, what happened is the property was transferred to a different name who with the ability to pay taxes, and it worked out with the best for everyone. So, yeah, and then year after year, the same, eight properties weren't paying taxes, basically. And so I think you're probably, might be in the same situation, that's why I want to take a look at this gentleman's, because if this, year after year, the same, it's not paying property, then we need to know why. Or this is probably, know why and then how we resolve to it. If a piece of property is not paying the taxes, that might, might be because they, it's, it's not, it's not collect as much as just the ability to. And so those, that's what I found in some of my audits in other areas too, is the way to go is to help that property become tax payable.
Some of your recommendations in our report?
I have never done an audit like that here. You've asked me what I've done in other areas, but, yeah.
Some of those ideas may be suggestions in our.
Well, I don't, I don't do a performance audit, so that would be part of a performance audit, where I would take a look at these individual names, saying, why aren't they being paid? And then, you know, go on in depth, so, yeah. But it might be worth it for, you know, someone to sit down for a day and take a look at, usually, like I said, it's a handful to a dozen to or so properties that aren't paying taxes that are making your tax collection lower than you expect. And it's just happened year after year after year, and it's, it might be an estate, it might be, you know, there might be a good reason for this.
Once it's put on the suspense list, then it doesn't go as far as the records as collectible taxes?
Once it goes on a suspense list, no, the.
So in other words, you can.
Suspenses are only.
Ninety-nine percent collection rate by putting stuff on the suspense list?
Yeah, that's usual, but two things that'll change your collection rate. People say that, sometimes when they compare one to the other, they say the collection rate. And there's two, two things that change collection rates. That's the change orders from the assessors. So you had a grant list of a certain amount, and you grew the grant list and you collected more money than you actually had in the beginning. And the other area would be, yeah, the suspense list. And so that's where it shows up in the audit also, is on the percentage calculation of collection, because you don't use the suspense portion. But the suspense, the, the accounts on the suspense are no, are not, are still sought after to be collected. They're not, they're, they come off the.
Right, it's up to the town or whoever is in charge of that, which would be us eventually once we know about it, to go after it in certain ways that we can go after it. And that's up to us to do it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Up to seventeen years.
Who makes the decision to put the name on the suspense?
Well, it depends on how aggressive, how aggressive the people you have collecting.
Absolutely, yes.
So if you have a marshal that's laid back and is not collecting or not answering his phone, then your chances of collecting are low.
We're gonna find out what's going on. That's a whole other report. Who puts the name initially on the suspense list?
It's, it's probably the tax collector and approved by council.
Put on by the tax collector and approved by the council.
Yeah, in a public, because, yeah, it would be the budget-making authority, which is your.
We never approved anything.
We had a suspense list three or four months ago. That's the first one I've seen since I've been here.
I mean, prior to that.
Prior to that, no, I have no recollection of seeing it.
Now, they're, they're in the package.
Yeah.
Suspense list before, a lot of them.
A lot of times I've gone to towns and I've recommended that they take a look, further look at the suspense, because usually a suspense list, and I've seen, and they do it to me too, in my Board of Finances, you know, after a two-hour meeting, they say, oh, we have one more thing to approve, suspense list, but it's, you know, and a lot of times it's approved in that fashion.
It's just another stamp, basically.
And like I said too, is that.
Friday night.
The information provided is really just a list of names. And like, what you did was compared it prior years, and that's what really needs to be done to, to look at this.
We're, it's all taken care of. We're gonna get a report very shortly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item eight, Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. I wanted to let you know that the mayor and I did meet with representatives of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities who's been looking to meet with us for a while, and they are looking for us to join at a cost of about $9,300 a year. And so I'm sure at some point, the mayor may request they either come in or we'll wait till budget time, which would be my recommendation. We'll take a look at it then. Also, to give you an update on the school grant status, because I know that's been a big issue, we received the list of the unreimbursable itemized list from our contractor. We got that two weeks early than he even thought he would have done, which is excellent. We are taking one last look. We've added a couple of things, and that should be signed this week by the superintendent and will be hand-watched into Hartford. So that's great news. And then on the high school roof, we are going to have to have the Board of Education and then the Permanent Building Committee approve that roof as accepted. That's part of the EDO force paperwork. So it'll be going to the Board of Education at their next meeting, and then it goes to the Permanent Building Committee in October. But we are still gonna have it no matter what, because the bill does have to be reintroduced to the state legislature, because there was a wording glitch. But hopefully, we're getting to the bottom of this so that we can stop paying the bond anticipation notes. And then lastly, the Stanley Williams, we just mailed everything over to the state, the bid specs, the bid responses, and the state does have to approve that. There were a couple of new paperwork forms that we were not aware of, so I'm hoping that this is still gonna pass spec, but we're waiting for them. And meanwhile, we are going to meet with the lowest bidder that seems to meet all our qualifications and move it along. But I should be hearing from the state soon whether they're gonna approve everything. And lastly, unless there's any other questions, Mr. Mayor, if we just need to add on, if you wish, the refunds, if I'm saying that right, property management requests from our attorney. That had been discussed at one of your previous meetings, and we think we might have a solution.
Do you, on the unreimbursable cost at NBIS, do you have a ballpark figure of what those are? Do you remember from that?
I don't, but I'll be glad to put it in management report, because I want to make sure that we have it in there. But it was a good chunk of change, may I say.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, Community Events and Presentations.
Can we have with us tonight Mitch Nowak, who I've already met with from our Eagle Scouts, who would like to make a presentation to on a project that he would like to do, and I think you'll find it one that is pretty exciting, so. Mr. Nowak, you're on.
Well, first off, I'd just like to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight at tonight's meeting. My name, as you know, is Mitch Nowak. I'm a Boy Scout from Troop 463 out of Northford. And my project is I'll be, first power washing and bleaching the dugouts over at Tuckett Field, along with repainting them. And then there's four or five steps that actually go down onto the field, and I will be ripping them out and replacing them completely along with, and as they are currently, there's gravel inside the steps, and I will be digging out the gravel and replacing that with brick pavers and also sloping them so that, as they currently are now, the water pools in the steps, so when it's a rainy day, there's big puddles as you walk down. I'll be slinging them so that there's no, so that, so that that is no longer a problem, and players won't have to get their cleats wet and muddy as they walk down the field.
Very nice. Questions?
This is the field over by the Public Works, correct?
Yes, yes.
The baseball stadium.
I'm looking at donations.
I'm sorry.
Donations and your own labor or?
Yeah, I'm looking for mostly material donations, but a cost estimate is gonna be around $12,000.
Have the pavers yet?
Um, yeah.
Come see me, I have pavers that I can give you.
Okay, I'm looking for about 100 square feet of them.
Okay, I can help with that. That's great.
I recommend you. Great job.
It is a great job.
Real good job.
And are you slated to do this this fall? Is that, or when, what's your timeframe?
Well, right now, I'm waiting for one more signature on my paper, and then as soon as I get that, I have to start, because I'll be 18 in December. And once I turn 18, that's it, so I'm out of time for it.
Time is of the essence.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a resolution recognizing September as Leukemia, Lymphoma, and Melanoma Awareness Month, whereas blood cancers currently afflict more than 1,012,533 million people in the United States with an estimated 140,310 new cases diagnosed each year. and forty thousand, three hundred and ten new cases diagnosed each year, and whereas leukemia and lymphoma and melanoma will kill an estimated fifty-three thousand, ten people in the United States this year. And whereas the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, LLS, through voluntary contributions, is dedicated to finding cures for these diseases through research efforts and the support of those that suffer from them. And whereas LLS maintains an office in Connecticut to support patients with these diseases and their family members in the state of Connecticut, and whereas the state of Connecticut is similarly committed to the eradication of these diseases and supports the treatment of its citizens that suffer from them, and whereas the state of Connecticut encourages private efforts to enhance research, funding, and education programs that address these diseases. Now therefore be it resolved that the state of Connecticut joins with LLS in designating the month of September, two thousand and twelve, as Leukemia, Lymphoma, and Melanoma Awareness Month, to enhance the understanding of blood-related cancers and to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support education programs and the funding of research programs to find a cure for them.
Mayor, I have a brief message on community events. When you have the...
On the resolution recognizing September as Leukemia and Lymphoma and Melanoma Awareness Month, be it resolved that Bonnie L. Therrien, the interim town manager, be in her with to approve the resolution recognizing September as Leukemia, Lymphoma, and Melanoma Awareness Month.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Duddy, roll call.
Mayor Canalar?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Rose? No, sorry. Council Fucci?
Yes.
And Council Webber?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what happens when you... Please pay for lots.
Mr. Mayor, I have a notice about the North Ramford Chamber of Commerce is having a breakfast meeting on Wednesday, September twelfth, from seven-thirty a.m. to nine a.m. The speakers will include a representative from Workforce Alliance, who will speak on programs for small businesses, such as the Step Up Program. Also, a representative from the UI Company will be on hand, will speak on energy saving programs. The cost is ten dollars, and if you want to make a reservation, you call the Chamber Office at two oh three, four eight three, six eight oh three to make a reservation. Thank you.
Okay, um, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Resignations and appointments. Joanne Wentworth as deputy mayor. Joanne Wentworth as deputy mayor.
Stand right. Yeah. Do you solemnly swear that to placate the discharge according to law, you will be as deputy mayor for the town of North Ramford to the best of your abilities to help you God?
I do. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, twelve, unfinished business discussion in action. Um, item A, charter revision, setting the ballot questions, explanatory text, tabled August seventh, two thousand and twelve.
At your last meeting, you had requested the town attorney and the town clerk work on, um, adding a couple of questions, finessing it for the ballot in November on the charter changes. You have those in front of you, as well as a draft of, uh, an explanatory text that can be put in the, uh, different voting areas and available to the public. Uh, so this is the final night that you have, for the questions anyways, to get that on the ballot for November. And if you have any questions, we have our town attorney and our town clerk with us this evening.
So is this the flyer that's actually going to be made available to voters on election day?
It would be if you so would. And it would also be posted for the public to read.
The way they changed the questions and put it on there now, it looks fine, to be honest with you. It's pretty, you read it, it's self-explanatory.
I'd like to make the following motion. I move that in accordance with seven dash one ninety-one F of the Connecticut General Statutes, the town council of the town of North Ramford approves the following ballot questions, amending the town charter for submission to the electors of North Ramford on November sixth, two thousand and twelve. Question one, shall the town charter be revised to permit the town council by the affirmative vote of no less than six of its members to modify the residency requirement for any given town manager? Question two, shall the town charter be revised so that a plurality of votes to accept the budget or to recommend to the town council its rejection be effective regardless of the number of qualified electors voting? Number three, shall town charter be revised to increase the number of Board of Education members from six to seven? Change term of office of such members to commence on the Tuesday following their election instead of in December, and increase total membership of six to total membership of seven under minority representation? And number four, shall practical revisions be made to the town charter to provide a coin toss in the event of a tie for mayor or deputy mayor? Remove the position of constable. Allow flexibility and pub, publication of public hearing notices as a cost savings. Update titles of some appointed town officials. Amend the language in the registrar of voters and justice of peace provisions for compliance with state statutes, and add clarifying language in conflict of offices provision. Second. Number three, shall the town board... Yeah, okay. So the word "the" is being added in question.
Motion made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, with the correction of the word "the."
Mayor Canalar?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Deputy Mayor Webber?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Okay, item B, updates to defined benefit plan documents. We issued, which we tabled.
No, we need to approve. Do we have to approve?
If you don't need them, it's a question. Yeah, the, the questions are pretty much explained on the, the sheet itself. I mean, if you wanna do that, it's gonna cost us extra and all that, but I would think that most people can read the questions and decipher what it means. It's up to the rest of you guys.
Just as long as I get a general direction from all of you, whether you want to, I mean...
I mean, are people really gonna take the time to read that whole thing before they go?
Not standing in line, you know, unless there's a real long line.
I mean, if we have it posted up there, maybe while they're standing in line, and they could read it on the wall, maybe as they're going in, that might be a better thing than printing up about two thousand of these things or whatever.
No, I wouldn't be doing that.
Well, I think if it's posted in the, like, Totucket Times prior to the elections, that people can read it and...
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great idea.
Being posted at the polling places.
Yeah, all right.
We can post them on the website, too.
Right, that's...
Yeah.
So do we have to approve this language for you to do those things?
If you wanted an explanatory text, then you would have to approve the statute.
Okay.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the explanatory text as presented.
Second.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, roll call.
Mayor Canalar?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucci?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Webber?
Yes.
Item B, update to defined benefit plan documents. We issued, which we tabled.
Still not there, we're almost there.
Want to table it till the next meeting?
I, just leave it alone here, fine.
Okay. Item C, part-time secretary assistants, assessor's office.
Uh, yes, at your last meeting, there was a vote of five to four not to proceed with the, uh, fulfilling of this position, and I think part of it was, there was an impression that all the money had been cut out of the budget for this particular part-time position, and, uh, we did a lot of the research to see, and it was cut back, definitely, but there was never any kind of form of vote to just eliminate it, and it's at the original, uh, I mean, the original amount that you approved of six thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Um, so I did decide to bring this back to you to see if, once that's clarified, if you want to move forward with it, but if you even want to discuss it, someone who voted no has to be, uh, the one who brings it back up for reconsideration, um, at this particular meeting, so. And Chris, our, our assessor is here in case there are questions, but, again, I just think it's in the budget, and I think it's something that's gonna assist much of what the auditor was just talking about, you know, with the personal property and those types of things.
I don't hear anything, so I guess it's a no.
Item D, volleyball court at the North Ramford High School.
We have representatives from the high school here this evening to talk to you about the volleyball court and answer a lot of your questions, as you had some at your last meeting.
Um, we received an email today that, um, the superintendent of schools had sent to the town manager, which she forwarded to us, and in there, um, it states that, um, the money, the cost of the sand was encumbered in last year's budget. Can you tell us how much that is?
Phil Chody, I'm the supervisor of operations for the road bed. Uh, we went to Keegan Sand and Stone just to get an idea of what it was gonna cost, and that was roughly sixty-two hundred dollars, for approximately one hundred and sixty yards of washed mason sand.
A hundred and sixty yards?
Yes.
Bill, do you have an outline of how much they plan on spending, and what, what the total cost of it is?
Uh, right now, we're looking at using some, uh, unused poles that are over at Jerome Harrison to hold up the net. Uh, we do have existing volleyball nets, uh, that were indoor volleyball nets at the high school that we were going to use, and, uh, at this point, uh, the only other thing that we're looking at is installing, uh, probably six twenty-foot, uh, black iron pipe, uh, posts, and we're planning on getting a net so that the, the ball would not go into the, uh, ruck bet. So that would be along the ruck bet.
You're putting that right against the building, right? Where the football locker room exit is, that doorway?
Correct, yes.
Okay, there's a manhole there.
The man, the manhole...
That thing you're calling a stream is more a swamp. The field on the other side, that's the field hockey field. When that rains, that's like a mud pit. Um, I think the place you're putting it is not a good place for it at all. You're gonna have to maintain that sand, you're gonna have to rake that sand every day, you're gonna have to keep that sand covered. Uh, I just don't think it's a good spot for it at all. I think it's a foolish spot, plus you have mosquitoes all around that stream, and there's a huge West Nile outbreak right now. So I think we need to rethink this whole situation before we move forward on this. That's my opinion, and I don't know what, how anyone else feels on this, but...
Well, according to the article that was in the last issue of the Totucket Times, and they talked about the press box and the beach volleyball court at the high school, it, it stated that both of those were going to be fundraising activities and not cost any taxpayer dollars, but according to the email that we received from the superintendent of schools, it, it will be costing dollars because they've encumbered money from last year's budget.
Right, and they were very upset that we cut their budget, and they were gonna lose a bunch of things, but now they wanna go spend money on an outdoor volleyball court when we have two gyms with volleyball nets right in them. And how many months of the year are they really gonna be able to use these volleyball courts?
Don't have to convince me.
Right, I mean, the kids are not in school June's align, August, and until late April, it's pretty cold outside. I mean, it just, it doesn't really make sense to me, to be honest with you. That's my opinion.
I'd rather see the sand money go towards the renovation of the press box.
Well, I'd, I'd rather just see the money go towards the kids themselves.
Well, if it's from last year's budget, actually what would happen is that money would have to come back to the town, and with the motion that we made, is that money actually would then get put into the fund that we have designated for capital expenditures for the Board of Education.
That's fine.
I would like to make a motion not to send this forward for an eight-twenty-four referral to planning and zoning.
Moved by Council Angeloni, seconded by Council Caprio. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Canalar?
Not to send it forward, so it would just die. Yes.
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Fucci?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Webber?
Yes.
New business discussion in action, recommended building permit fee changes, set a public hearing date.
As a part of this year's budget, there is money in there for a, well, actually, a new software program. It's gonna be really phenomenal, not just for our staff, but also for the public usage. Uh, and speaking with Mr. Cowell and I about, um, the software and installing it, we talked about that, um, he would like to make some recommendations of some new fees, make it much easier, understanding, trying to streamline it also throughout the region, which makes it a heck of a lot easier for our builders. Um, so before we do anything with the software, I suggested that we come to you, because if we put the, the software in and then there's changes, obviously there's extra costs.
Are we talking about rate increases across the board on, on building permit fees and that?
Correct, and I can have, um, Tom come and describe them in detail. It isn't like there's a lot of changes, but it's just really streamlined. So, Tom, if you wanna come up and just go through them, how do...
All right, um... And Tom, just let us know how, how it, the plan is to streamline it with the fee increases, just give us a good explanation on that beforehand, maybe.
Currently, if, if somebody, if you called down and asked me what the fees are, you're, you're gonna hear it's thirty-six dollars for the two thousand, first two thousand dollars in value, and there's twelve dollars per thousand after that, and the twenty-six cent state ed fee. After that, you don't hear about, I'm speaking it, but you don't hear the fifty dollars or thirty dollars for a zoning permit, fifteen to thirty dollars for zoning compliance, the twenty-five dollars for your CO fee, and the ten dollars for the microfoaming fee. People forget that, they don't, they're, I'm telling them, but they're not hearing it.
Right.
Then what happens, they come to the counter, and they're surprised, because they've got another seventy or eighty dollars in fees on top of what they planned. So I'm looking just to kinda, kinda roll those fees into one fee, simplify things. So what we would go to is thirty-six dollars for the first thousand dollars in value, and then fifteen dollars per thousand after that with the state ed fee. We're not gonna eliminate the CO fees, but we are gonna roll the zoning permit, zoning compliance, and microfoaming fees into that fifteen dollars. So it, it looks like a rate increase.
Are, are all permits subject to those, all of those fees, the zoning permits and...
Uh, all, the mechanical plumbing, electrical are not.
Okay, just general building?
General building permits are. If you come in to do a deck, you're subject to those fees.
Right.
And the guy comes in and, you know, spends four thousand dollars on the deck, he's paying twenty-seven dollars and change per thousand. The guy comes in and spends forty thousand dollars on addition. The guy comes in and spends $40,000 on an addition, he's paying $1483 a thousand.
So it's cheaper to take a permit out for an addition than a deck?
Yeah, well, essentially, per thousand. The guy doing the small deck or shed is getting creamed. And the reality is...
And we set those rates, right? What we could charge for a deck, what we charge for a bathroom, what we charge for a square foot for houses?
Well, what we do is we base it on valuation studies, cost per square foot.
Okay.
All right. So that's how we value these things out. I think if you start setting separate fees for like a shed, it's $100. It confuses things, it complicates what we're trying to do with the software system.
So what might happen is somebody's permit may be less and somebody else's permit may be more. It's not necess, it's not necessarily across-the-board increase. I mean, just correct me, I'm trying to understand it. But we're moving it around?
We're moving it around. We're making it more equitable for everybody. And, you know, I mean, the guy coming in, you know, Big Y coming in and building theirs, you know, compared to the speaking per thousand, they got a big break.
Right.
And, you know, little guy coming in, somebody coming in and gets a blow-up pool from the store that they don't know they need a permit for, then they come in, and, you know, all of a sudden, they're looking at $100 in fees, $20 in fees, and they can't understand it. They paid $300 for this pool.
Wow, I didn't even know you needed a permit for that. You need a permit for one of those blow-up pools?
That's the problem, most people don't know that.
Wow. Well, personally, I'm personally against anything that raises the cost of anybody doing any kind of business in town, but it doesn't necessarily sound like that's what it is. But, I mean, that's really all I, I don't know how anybody else on the town feels involved.
Did we raise fees last year?
No.
No.
When did we raise them last year?
Last time we raised fees, Joanne, was about five years ago.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah.
Five to six, I think.
Five years ago when I first got here.
How does it relate to the software program, Tom? How does that?
Well...
We can't use the software program?
Well, we can use the software program, but what happens is they have to build in our fees. If we build it into a more simplified system, that's less they have to build in. So they don't have to build in all these separate boxes and do all these calculations. The program doesn't have to do all this.
So it's a simpler program?
Smoother.
It's just a simpler, fees can go around across the board, makes it easy for everybody.
If we change six months down the road, they're going to have to come in and redo the software, or even a year down the road, and that's going to cost us too.
It's going to cost us more money to have that done.
Make the changes first.
Right. It doesn't sound bad that the littler guy who's doing the deck or whatever is not getting hammered as bad?
Right.
Because that's really what we kind of want to do. We don't want to slam the little guy.
But the other end of that is, we really, we want to encourage not to be good, but we want to try to encourage some...
My next question was, how do we compare with other towns in the area?
Well, I've done some comparisons, and most towns are where we're at or where we want to go to right now, or they want to go there.
So what you're saying is we're equal to surrounding towns?
Yes, we're...
And not above?
We're equal to surrounding towns, and obviously, less than communities like New Haven or just astronomical.
Right. I mean, I'm talking about comparable communities to us.
I am talking about communities of our size and area.
Okay. So we're not going to be above them, we're going to be about the same?
We're going to be about the same, no. Some of the communities that are of the same size as us may be a little less talented. Speaking to these building officials, they're all looking to do the same thing. We're, everybody's getting hurt. They're not pulling enough to cover the revenue, cover the cost of operating their offices.
So that person coming in that doesn't know they have to take a permit for that blow-up pool, when they do come in, it's going to be less than it is now under the...
Yes, yeah, it'll be less than it is now.
Then John, did you read in, let's see, section, what is it, 123-6, violations and penalties?
I was going to have Tom go over that.
Yeah, item A.
There's some changes there.
It says, "Any owner or authorized agent of an owner who commences construction or alteration without first receiving the required permits for such work shall be assessed a penalty, and they may all equal to the fee charged obtaining such permits, provided however that the building official may waive such penalty in his discretion if he deems appropriate." I could see where that could be a problem.
I could too.
Or create a problem. And I want to protect you.
Because the building inspectors don't hate me?
Yeah. I mean, I just see it's, you know, open.
Somebody sue us, you mean?
There needs to be somebody in the appeal process, though.
Yeah.
And whether that's the town manager or his...
Right. I just, when you're out there alone like that, it could be difficult. I'd like to protect the building inspector.
When is the software person coming in to do everything?
Well, I mean, he's starting things now.
We're on hold.
Okay, so there's no huge rush right now?
We have to set a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing.
We can have John look at it and all that, and, okay, that's a good idea, then maybe have John look at it.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was in my office this afternoon.
I knew that.
The agenda was just to refer for a public hearing, so...
Yeah, so we can defer to the public hearing, and then he'll have time to review.
The public hearing's not till October, so we still have time to go over everything.
Okay. So we want to set the date?
Yeah, I'll move the motion to, motion to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012, at 7:30 PM, to hear a public comment on the proposed revisions to Chapter 123 as presented by the building inspector.
Second.
Moved by Council Dewey, seconded by Council Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Canowar?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Dewey?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Pucci?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Wett?
Yes.
Is this supposed to be like double the fee?
Any other questions?
Did you get the software yet?
We're working on it.
I think that's what we're going to have between now and the hearing, right?
Item B, conversion to natural gas, North Branford Town Hall.
Yes, some time ago, representatives of Southern Connecticut Gas met with town officials, also with school officials, to talk about a great incentive program to, with no cost to the communities, install natural gas lines. And then obviously, would have to do the conversion to either an upgrade or completely new burner system in order to utilize that. So both of those are on your agenda tonight for the town hall, but also the high school. With the town hall, I think it'd be easier to take it one by one. The only thing with that is we are locked into our oil rates right now, so we could still implement the lines, but I would then recommend that we do the actual conversion costs in the next budget year, because if you back out of that oil price, you're going to pay out the whole year, which I don't think we want to do that.
Year ends June 31st or 30th, whatever.
30th, right, so you'd have to pay...
Right, so we just wait until after that.
But I think this is a great concept, it's a great idea. And John Maziarz is here, who's the commercial account manager for Southern Connecticut Gas, and he's here actually for both items, in case you have any questions.
Bonnie, you said they're going to install the line at no cost, but the actual conversion of the burner system would be our responsibility.
Correct.
What are we talking about with that?
You would be talking about that, I can either bring it up, wow, there's two ways we could do this. You really wanted to do it right away, but I don't see the rush because of that oil lock-in. We could actually draw it during your capital, which will be on your next meeting, but it makes more sense to me to do it as a part of your budget. Do it as a part of the new budget, and then you'd have it ready for July.
The town hall is different.
Yeah, now, the high school, Bill's here to talk about how they want to do this right away and do the conversion.
Well, you could say unfortunate by converting to gas. I mean, plus, gas doesn't fluctuate as much as oil does, number one, and it's just a cleaner fuel, and it's more efficient. You want to come through my road while you're at it, or what?
Yeah, come on, come on. And I figured we could just take the town hall first, because they're slightly different.
I'd love to have gas.
We don't have, they're not locked in on the oil till next year?
I do not believe so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. As Bonnie said, my name is John Maziarz, I'm the commercial account manager for many towns, and I'm very fortunate to have North Branford in my portfolio, including all the existing commercial customers and what we hope will be many new commercial customers. Kind of excited to be here, because I like to feel that as time goes on, and if this becomes a reality, which I hope it does, that what I'm here for is to help the town save some money in your budget for the use of energy in your facility buildings. And actually, Vincent probably said everything I had to say, so I probably could finish right here, so thank you for your encouragement. But let me just elaborate a little bit further if I can. In reference to the town hall, I did a cost analysis, and today, in the world we're in today, just took a projection of the amount of oil that you used here in the town hall, which on an average basis, and I got all this information from the town, about 5,200 gallons of oil. If I took those 5,200 gallons, just to give you a perspective of the cost we're talking about, at $3.20 a gallon, which you might be close to or even higher than now, it's about $16,700 a year for oil. I took that same energy and just converted it into natural gas based on what our costs are today, subject to change, of course, but what they are today. And we're talking about, probably about $8,700 for the gas rate that this town hall would be on if you converted this building to heating and hot water. And also, a great opportunity, as Bonnie knows, to, at some point in time, when it's appropriate, to add a natural gas generator for this building too. You know, the cost of that usage is almost minimal. Hopefully, you don't have too many power outages. However, so included with this, we're talking about an $8,000 savings ballpark on what your costs are now with oil. That's number one. Number two, as Bonnie mentioned, if you do decide to do this conversion, convert this building to natural gas, we would install the natural gas pipeline from the street on Foxen Road to a point in the back of the building, which we've already looked at, you know, with your facilities, folks, and a gas meter at no cost to you. Now, initially, when I had gotten this call about a year or so ago, the town manager at the time was interested in that gas generator. And I got back to him, and I said, "If we install gas for just a gas generator, based on the way we do business and the formula we have to use, we've got to do a profit and loss and eternal rate of return like any business would do." I gave him the ballpark price of about $9,800, that the town would have to pay the gas company to supplement the cost of that gas line coming in. And then I proceeded to tell him, "Let me do an analysis on top of the generator and see what it would cost you, if anything, if you converted the building to natural gas for heating and hot water." And that cost came back at zero. So I just strategically said to him, "Take that $9,800, pretty much use that for the conversion rather than giving it to the gas company." So that's just one scenario of, you know, what could happen here. Projected cost of conversions, we, the gas company, would take care of bringing the gas line to the building and a gas meter at no cost if you converted this building. And then, you know, the town manager would have to work with getting bids, as you normally do, for getting the conversions done. However, when we initially looked at this, there was a contractor who did propose the conversion. If it was just converting the existing boiler, taking out, if you will, an oil burner and putting in the gas burner-related controls, it was roughly in the ballpark of somewhere in the area of $10, $11, $12,000. So if you put those numbers together, you're saving $8,000 for fuel. It's costing 11, it's, you know, kind of a year, year and a half of a payback. Makes business sense from that standpoint. So from the standpoint of the town, the town hall here, certainly if you decide to want to do this, you certainly have time to do your due diligence and get the bids, et cetera. And as Bonnie mentioned, you're locked into that oil contract, we understand that. Next year will come. Love to see you save that $8,000 this year, but if it's not feasible based on your legal commitments with a contract, we're going to be around next year too. And we'd certainly be willing to bring that gas service to this building next year just as easy as we would this year. So I wanted to just make you all understand that, you know, where we are today with energy, as Vincent related before too, is just an incredible, different mode and a different focus. And that all has to do, and I'm not going to take your time tonight, but I'll just summarize it by saying, with the research, the development, and the findings of new natural gas supplies right in our own backyard, for those of you that might have heard of the word of, called fracking, in the states of New York, Pennsylvania, Virginia, West Virginia, tremendous amount of gas supplies have been found, and therefore, supply and demand, that's what caused, has caused our prices to stay down. Looking in the crystal ball, if any of us could dare do that, pretty much look right now that the cost as they are now, especially compared to other fuels, is probably going to stay that way for quite some time to come. Much greater supply of gas than the demands are today, as much as our conversions are raising very rapidly. So, you know, I encourage you to look at this. Who else is doing this? I'm happy to say, one of the other towns I cover is the town of North Haven. And next week, three new, brand-new gas services are going into the town hall in North Haven, the town hall annex in North Haven, the police department in North Haven, and they're renovating the old middle school on Elm Street and Bailey Road, and we're going to put gas in there also that was never put there. So things are happening. Guilford, the Adams Middle School in Guilford, it just converted to gas. So a lot of folks in your capacity are making that move because of what it looks like today and looking in the crystal ball what it could look like in the future. Very, very optimistic. In reference to the high school, we looked at this also about three or four years ago, and at that time, I know and was privy to the fact that the conversion of the old boiler, you have a new boiler in the high school now, but the old boiler at that time would have been about $23,000. And when I had my conversations with folks here in the town hall, I pretty much told them, "We'd run a gas service to the high school," because you probably know that there is gas to the auditorium, "so we could very easily connect it to the high school, and if you converted that building over to natural gas, that also would be no cost." This was the same three years ago. The savings three years ago, when I called back and talked to the person I was talking to, was to say that $23,000 would be paid back in just a little over a year. At the time, I was told there was no money in the budget to be able to pay for that, we'll look at it next year. And until this year, when we finally kind of unraveled the whole situation again, so I'm, I know now that you do have a brand-new boiler in there. I was kind of disappointed when that happened, I wasn't aware of it. And a couple of years ago, a boiler was put in there, and I thought maybe that was a good opportunity to, you know, to put gas in, but it didn't happen. So you have a brand-new boiler there, and whether that cost is going to be $23,000 or a little bit more, don't know. But I made a little analysis on your usage at the high school. On the average, $58,000 gallons a year. Again, I just projected $3.20 a gallon. It's about $185,600. And a projection for natural gas, based on that kind of usage, higher usage, better rate, less cost, the natural gas usage would be projected out, projected now, at about $78,000 with $106,000 savings. Pretty substantial amount of money, right? Even if it didn't turn out to be $106,000, $100,000, $80,000, $90,000? And if that conversion cost doubled to $46,000, which I don't believe it will, where's your payback? Vincent, probably in what, six months, right?
Yeah.
Somewhere in that area?
Yeah.
So I'm here to encourage you. Obviously, we're in the gas business, we want new customers, but we also want to look at the reality of what we're talking about here in the world that we're in, trying to cut corners, trying to save money, especially tax dollars. And I follow your business very closely in the paper, because you are my account, and I certainly commend you all on being able to, this year, I believe, bring the tax situation around to where there were no tax increases for your constituents in town. You know, think about the numbers that I just relayed to you today for next year.
John, how long will it take to run the line from Route 80 to the town hall?
How long?
How many days?
Two days.
Two days? And then the high school?
The high school, one day.
One day. Would you, at the high school, you're going to have to go across that roadway?
No, we would tap into where the line goes to the auditorium. That would be one option. And the other option would be the roadway, if we had to do that.
All right.
But there's two options there. We'd have to look at that again.
All right. Two days, something like that.
Buying natural gas keeps Americans working, too.
Yeah, we've all seen that, so it is a big difference.
See if the school's locked in on their fuel.
I, I...
Phil's here.
Phil, do you know, are you locked in on your fuel?
I, I thought they said that they did.
I think we are, yes.
Yes. So I don't think we can do it right now if you're locked into the fuel price and usage. The same contract that the town is on.
Yeah, he's talking about some...
Dual burner?
Yeah, dual, so it would be oil and annual gas.
Right.
You could run either or.
Yeah, that's what we did at the intermediate school.
Right.
Yeah.
So he's different than town hall would be.
Right.
What's the burner cost?
What's the burner cost?
We figure for, well, the price that we got for two burners was about thirty-four to thirty-seven thousand.
That's installed?
Dual, dual burn.
Phil, could you come up for it?
Yes.
That's installed and getting rid of the other ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
The burners that are in place right now, one is an eighty-nine vintage and the other two are ninety-three. Currently, the eighty-nine is just used for spare parts because now we only have two boilers in the high school, we used to have three.
Is the burner the only reason the third one doesn't run?
Pardon?
Is, is it just because the burner's no good?
Uh, we don't need the third. We did not need the third burner, or boiler.
So we're only going to convert two out of the three?
Correct.
What's the purpose of this dual fuel?
You run either or.
Uh, you can either burn oil or natural gas, depending on the supplies. Uh, you get a real cold, cold, cold day and they're having trouble with pressure, then you can go over to oil. That's, that's the only reason. In the auditorium and Jerome Harrison School, it's strictly gas. There is no conversion.
And it runs much better, much cleaner, maintenance, everything is...
It's, it's an easier to maintain system.
So why don't we just go to the gas burning boiler?
We've been talking about this for two and a half years.
Why not? We need to do it, I know that.
What's, what's the difference in the price of the burner if you don't go to the dual fuel and you just use the gas burner?
It's slightly lower because it doesn't have the second jet in it, and it doesn't have the second, it doesn't have the igniter, the pretty oil, it's different.
So when you say slightly lower, what are we talking about? You said thirty-six, thirty-seven?
Uh, probably, probably four thousand apiece difference.
It's also less things to go wrong.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Well, would there be any advantage to us keeping, to have the dual? I mean, other than what you said, the, the peak usage times in the winter?
It's, it's like having a belt and suspenders. It just makes you feel better that if one runs out, you can always go to the other.
But then we got to buy fuel oil.
Uh, yes.
You haven't used the fuel oil at the intermediate school, right? You're running gas, right?
No, we haven't.
Right, so then I don't think the dual burner deal's what we want to go to.
But then, but then the issue becomes, I believe we have the contract that we couldn't do it until next year.
Right, right. Well, we can wait till the thirtieth, but just...
Well, I mean, you could probably do it in the springtime once.
Right, but just the initial savings in one year is going to be phenomenal. I just bought oil, it's three fifty-nine a gallon.
I mean, gas is going to be the future anyway. Pretty good price.
Yeah, I gotta go call you a friend.
Good thing for everything you read and hear.
Let me just quickly ask a couple of comments that he made, if you would. As far as the dual burner is concerned, the dual burner, how many customers in your capacity are putting in the dual fuel burner?
Thank you.
None? The intermediate school has a dual burner in, I put gas in there, was it three years already, four years ago when that renovation was done? You haven't, to my knowledge, you haven't used a drop of oil. However, it's a, as he mentioned, and I agree with him, it's a, it's a good field motion to consider that, if you want to feel like, you know, gas and oil are what they are today, what's going to happen three or four years from now? What if it turns around? You know, is that possible? Is it, it's probably possible, is it feasible? Probably not. It's, it's, it's an extra cost, it's extra headaches, it's keeping an oil tank on, on property, no one has done it. They're not doing it in North Haven, they're getting rid of all their oil, they're putting in straight gas. And as a matter of fact, one of the other issues here, probably not for the high school because that boiler is so new, but here for the town hall, there is an option of just replacing that burner in your existing boiler. Okay, it's going to cost more to put in a high efficient fuel. When I say high efficient, the gas burner would probably get you eighty, eighty-two percent efficiency. You're getting much less than that with oil now. A new, brand-new boiler would give you a ninety-six or ninety-seven percent efficiency, cost you more upfront. However, there is a rebate incentive involved with that. We already calculated that based on the contractor's initial price of what that would be, and that would be a thirty-six hundred dollars off of that system if you decided to go that route. Now granted, you've got plenty of time to talk about this and look at it, you've got till next May based on your contract with the oil company. However, I can only encourage you to certainly look at this seriously and, and, you know, make the right decision for yourselves and for the town. I'm working with Bonnie and whoever else I need to work with as time goes on. Last but not least, we are now looking at also running a new gas line if it becomes a third issue for you to both the Totucket and the Stanley Williams facilities also. Our gas services now are over a half a mile away, and my initial estimates tell me when we look at this, and we're not, we're doing, just doing it now, so that's another issue for another time, as Bonnie requested. Quick chance, we could bring gas to both of those buildings also at no cost to the town. Any other questions, comments? I'm here to help in the future, be willing to come back as soon as I can.
So if the high school is under the same contract that we're under, because I believe we did lock in, the town locked in for both the board of ed and on the town side, this work would just be postponed until the springtime? Is that, is that correct?
Right. Well, if you really want to be aggressive as a group, that's all up to you. I would be willing to put that, if you made that commitment now, we'd run the gas lines between now and next May, probably in the fall. Both buildings can just wait for you after May to make those conversions next summer by this time. That offer is there also.
Okay, all right.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
It's about a hundred degrees in there. Can we turn the air down a little bit? It's about a hundred in there.
I don't think it's a hundred.
I don't think it's a hundred.
Is it in the budget?
Turn it off.
We have that in the budget.
Take it out of my pay.
Item D, Chitsey Drive update.
I had Kurt do it, now he's not. So just while he's doing that, just as a question, so you're going to wait on the gas and I'll bring it back to you in a few...
We should talk about it.
We should talk about it. It should be on our next agenda so we could talk about it.
Okay, so you want me to put it on your next agenda for both items?
If, if it's that much of a savings, we'd be foolish just to deny it.
Well, there's, there's, there's things that we have to investigate, but we should, I think we, we need to convert, but we also need to, he talked about, are we going to replace the boiler? We don't know how old the boiler is in this building, we don't know how the, old the boilers are in the school. We really got to do some sort of a...
Research.
Study, a research on all of this.
Then I'll get that on.
Not on converting to gas, but the specifics of equipment that we have as far as age and efficiency and, you know what I mean? So we could all make an educated decision on that part of it.
Okay. Um, I'll put it on your next agenda, and just again, my own observation, is if you're really seriously even thinking about this, I'd sign these agreements, because I've seen this happen way too many times, the town, wait, 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 program's on.
Yeah.
Sorry, and then you're left, you got to pay for it, so.
So we probably ought to put in the line this fall, as he suggests, tell them...
Right, that's what, but knowing...
All it is, is an approval to change over to gas, and then we could get the fix...
Yeah, then we'll work the rest of it out.
Then we could get the budget figures for, do we want to stay with the boiler we have now, or do we want to go with the ninety-seven or ninety-eight percent efficiency boiler?
Yeah, it's just that you'd be making the commitment that in that budget, you're switching over. That's the only caveat.
Well, and you can also have time to check to just verify that the school is in the same contract that, that we're in on the fuel oil, so that if they can't convert, if they're in the same situation that they can't convert now, that the cost of the boiler...
But it sounds, it sounds like the worst-case scenario, we're forced to do this dual fuel burner.
Well, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, but we don't have to do it if they can just wait until the springtime, if we're in the contract and then we just do gas.
We could look into it too.
Yeah, we should definitely do some research on that, because it may make sense.
It sounds like the savings are just too astronomical.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I want them to come, come to my road, will you please?
I think we, I wish they had it on my road.
I know. No, you and I will never see it.
Never.
I know.
We'll never see that.
Okay.
We'll be caught wood again.
Okay.
Before it happens.
Well, we got a gas line right on Twin Lakes Road, it's right near my road.
You might get it.
Right.
So what do you want to...
She's going to put it on the next agenda, on the next agenda, weekend.
I think so, we said, within a half a mile of the skid.
All right, we have Chitsey Drive update.
We're got some pricing updates.
Kurt, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, Chitsey Drive, this is an ongoing project, it's a road that we've scheduled for reconstruction. First, first item to ask Kurt is the drainage. Essentially, probably ninety-five percent complete with the plants and specifications. That should wrap up this week, and then we'll get that out, the drainage improvements out this week. We'll give the purchasing, so probably advertise next week or something like that, but they anticipated by start of construction and the September, beginning of October to do the drainage. Ultimately, that, there is a gas issue over there, that we, we, there may be the potential to put gas in there at the same time. We, we are trying to work with the gas company, make sure there's a follow-up with the residents, because if we're going to redo the road, it makes sense, we'll do our drainage, the gas company's going to do their work, we'll try to get them to do their work, and then ultimately they'll come in and grind in and, and pave the road. It will look like the actual reconstruction of the road will be put off to the spring, but at least the drainage, which is the significant...
When will this be completed?
Pardon?
When will this be completed?
The drainage part?
The drainage?
Spring, spring.
Well, the drainage would be done this fall, and then it would put off the reconstruction. We really wanted to go through a winter for some of the settlement, for the drainage, that would have to happen in the spring.
I got a letter from a constituent dated September nineteenth saying you guys were going to do this over a year ago. How come we...
That's absolutely correct.
How come we didn't?
And there's a lot of people here tonight from Chitsey Drive, I've gotten a lot of phone calls on this.
Right, how come we didn't do this?
Originally, it was scheduled to be a public works project. That didn't happen. It got discussed, and, you know, in terms of how it was going to happen.
Who discussed it though? Wasn't us?
The town manager.
See, the problem is, we're throwing so much on our public works guys, they can't even get the grass cut anymore in this town, okay? On, on the fields, I mean. We got, we got to straighten this whole mess out and get things done.
Right.
Okay, we can't keep putting things off because the people are getting upset and they have a right to be upset.
Absolutely, it, it, it's, the drainage is, is a major issue and it's been ongoing for years.
Right. So this, this drainage work's going to be done by the end of October?
That's, it should be, I mean, we'll be able to bid.
No, 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 not, I don't want to hear "should be's," I want to hear it's going to be done.
It's going out to bid, Vin, so...
Right.
Once it goes out to bid and once they accept it, it's going to a private contractor, so you know it's getting done.
There's a lot of things that are...
Because they want to get paid, so it's going to be done before the frost.
And then it's going to be paved next spring.
Yeah, we, we have to go through the winter.
Right, I know that, it's getting too late to pave, I know that.
The problem was, the poor Franny, he lost a couple of men and everything else, and, you know, his...
Poor Franny's doing everything in this town.
His plate got fuller and fuller, and he couldn't, he couldn't do it anymore.
We had the tropical storm, and then we had the, you know, the snowstorm, and it just...
All right, so just get it done.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know there's a few residents here, would somebody like to talk? Just state your name and where you live.
Come on up.
Hey, I'm from Chitsey Drive. And I got that letter a year ago.
Please state your name, please. Linda, please state your name and address, please, for the background.
They ripped up the whole front of my house, through the curb, all around the curb, they told us, do not fix our, our mailbox, our lawn, our flattens, anything, because the shoe was going to be done a year ago. Now, nothing has been done, it's a total mess, and they kept telling me, don't do it, don't do it. And every week someone comes by and marks with marks all over the street, what's going to be done in two weeks? It's not done. Now you're telling me I have to wait a whole nother year before it's a project to decide meanwhile, I'm supposed to be putting in the driveway, and a certain amount of cost that they gave me, that's not going to be done because they said, don't put in the driveway if they're going to wreck the street, which is true. So now that means next year, the price is going to be twice as much to put it in the driveway. And I just don't think it's fair. I mean, I don't want to be done about it, but if you, we're going to do something a year ago, it should be at least started.
She's absolutely correct, the, the, you're right, she said that was a do it last fall, we sent out a letter, and that was the plan, the public works wasn't... They weren't able to do it.
We're gonna, we're gonna get it done, get it done soon, but it's, it's going out to bid, it's going to be done soon, but the final pavement's not going to be done till the spring unfortunately.
I mean, everything will be buttoned up in terms of, you know, everything will be patched, everything will be...
I know, it will be fixed, meanwhile, I'm waiting for everything, you know, and the cost for me to destroy it is going to be a lot more next year. You know, I don't think that's fair, they shouldn't even...
Kurt, the motion says that this construction begins in October, is that going to happen?
It's going to go to bid and we're going to line up the time, it should probably take them a month, probably, to do the work. I mean, so it's like the month of October, and they get to patching it.
Done through the winter, got to wait and pay on the Friday.
The next spring before they...
They do the final...
The final call.
It will happen, at the end.
Running saddles and...
It's one to sell, but it's going to get ground up, reshaped, paint, you know, both pave aprons, you know, if you do, it's a re-probative construction. Everything will get reset. One of the issues we're, we're talking about too is the gas company. I know, if you receive the survey, because we've asked them to send the survey, there's a line right in Twin Lakes Road, we're trying to coordinate all. I mean, but the, we have to get our drainage, then if they, the gas, gas, if they ever do anything, that would be afterwards. If they're not going to do it, they're not of interest, they won't do it. But we've asked them that question, because it only makes sense to try to incorporate all those things at the same time.
Is there gas in that area?
And you're right, for the road, we've had...
Twin Lakes Road.
Yeah, they could run gas down my house.
Fifty-five has been on our list for ten, fifteen years. We did the one half, but we never were able to do your half until we upgraded the drainage. And that didn't happen, so the TILCOM did, or some of their work, under the, we were able to coordinate TILCOM when they shut down their rail tracks. It's been something that's...
So the plans are all done, we're going out to bid and moving along.
And then, yeah, the kind of question, and I, believe you, we, you know, we apologize for the delay, because it's something that we lived with all the time too, but there isn't, there isn't a major drainage issue, and we want to solve that. And we want to solve that.
All right, thank you. Cedar Lake Road Water Connection update. How are we doing with Cedar Lake?
Okay, uh, we're doing good. Uh, we've, you know, awarded the water service connections. Uh, that's really the last phase, uh, that work. We commence next week, or the week after. We have the contractor lined up to meet with the residents and walk through next week. And they are aware of it. Um, that's another one. And once we get, we wanna get those in. That road, we've been putting off for probably, uh, ten, twelve years, any reconstruction to that road, waiting for the funding for the, uh, water line installation and water service connections from DEP. We've got it. We're at the tail end, because at the end, we wanna do the same thing over there. We wanna pulverize the road, regrade it, and pave it.
That road looks like it's been bombed.
Oh, absolutely. Once that water, it, it's gotten gradually worse over the years since that water line went in.
The mains in, right? They just do the laterals now.
Mains in, the service connections.
Yeah.
Um, that's the one, and we have the DEP grant for that. So that's all bid. It's just a matter of, we actually were able to add one more property to the list of what DEP would fund. We went round and round that, and there was some questions. There's some things DEP hadn't straightened out over the past, uh, couple of weeks, which they actually ruled in our favor and residents' favor. Which was, so it was worth the effort to try to get them to all cases. So that's all up to bid. We're just trying to get it to happen.
Great.
Thanks, Kurt. Item F, Finance Committee Draft Agenda for the September twelfth, two thousand and twelve meeting.
The, the one change on here should be that the approval of the minutes would be from the July two thousand and twelve meeting. There was no meeting in August.
Thank you.
Would like to move the agenda as amended.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Doody. Roll call?
Mayor Cantalar.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Doody.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Flutie.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to amend the agenda to discuss the RaFone foreclosure?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Um, we received an email today. It looks like it came from Attorney Yorma.
Attorney Yorma, correct, yes.
And-
Uh, Fitz.
Executive session?
You wanna do that executive session?
No.
All right.
Right, you wanna add it?
Yeah, it should be added to executive session.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second. If you withdraw your motion.
Sure. Yes.
All right.
Uh, we got citizen statements.
Hang on. Withdraw those motions. Sorry. Um, citizen statements and petitions.
Hi, Donna Firstway, twenty-four Marjory Drive. Um, I heard the other gas companies be even about the quality of gas and all that. Um, I took the energy order pass. This friend from Energy Utilities. And it sounds like you don't know what we have in any building, that you haven't had an energy assessment done for all town buildings. There are all companies that will come out, they'll do an assessment, and they'll actually itemize everything you have for energy. Boilers, control systems, air conditioning, air handlers, lighting. Um, they'll find out where your leakage is, or your air leaks. Um, so they'll be able to give you a detailed report on, you know, what you could do to save money in energy. Oil, gas, electricity, whatever. And what you can do is you can probably put something out to bid and say, you know, you know, has some companies bid on how much it would cost to actually assess all the town buildings and say what we can do to save money. It might not, you know, obviously, natural gas, I mean, he works for a gas company. He's gonna say gas is better. But, you know, they come out, we just, they don't actually work for anybody, but they'll tell you what you can do to save money. You know, electricity, let you have, um, bad doors, they're leaking, or the lighting, you know, change different kind of lighting. So they help you with the electricity and all your utilities, and they'll tell you what you can do. And I think it's an investment. If some of the boilers are twenty, thirty years old. And they also have control systems, just major control systems that can help with making the boilers work better, just in keeping the existing boilers. So, um, just an idea, but it's something that won't cost that much money to have an assessment done and then save a ton of money.
Kurt, it's my understanding, the town in North Bradford has had those energy audits in the buildings.
I think in the past-
Yeah, and it hasn't, wasn't that long ago?
It was a periodic thing. I mean, technology changes.
Your, your UI companies and your Northeast, we don't have Northeast Utilities, but we have Wallingford Electric. We have Northeast Utilities.
At the end of town, I go for mine.
But what UI will do, and I know they will, I'm almost sure Wallingford will do-
Well, like lighting, that, that-
Yeah, they'll tell you, because I, I'm almost sure the schools-
UI just came out with a brand-new program. I just got the email today and I-
That's gonna be on our breakfast meeting next week.
Yeah, I've, um, um, we've already set up a date that they're coming in. Because it's, it's a kind of a clean energy. It's a brand-new state clean energy, and there's a whole bunch of new grant money. So I'll be meeting with them in the next couple of weeks.
It'll, it'll be on our breakfast meeting.
You know, they can, they can actually session boilers and air conditioning systems and air handlers and everything else. And like she said, there's all the grant money. And you have that read-by-sample program, you know, that the state is putting on. So, um, there's a lot of places to save money that just, just they're talking to you or something like that. You know, Wallingford's is pretty old.
They don't even do that for houses now.
Yeah, they do it for houses, but there's, there's energy orders that will come out for businesses and for government. And they're not the same ones just doing it for houses.
And they don't work for utility companies.
And they don't work for the utility companies. They will work with utility companies to see what systems that they're putting in will actually get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I think you're talking about something different. You're talking about the whole, the whole. We had UI here a few years ago. Like, still, like you're talking about-
The whole system, everything.
Subternuts, yeah.
Okay.
I have something to say. Another constituent contacted me. And they were upset about some conditions of some houses that were left empty and overgrowth in the yards and trees fell into their yards, and they had to actually pay money to have the trees cleared from their land. And they're just wondering, you know, if we're ever gonna do anything about these empty houses, the blight situation that we have in some houses in this town. And I think we should have somebody look into what we can do about it, whether if the house is empty and owned by the bank, whether we can find the bank so much per day or, or whatever, because now it's costing these people's neighbors money because things are going wrong on their property, some of their neighbor's property that's left empty. And he said a tree fell on his property in one of the storms and he had to get it cleared, and it cost them money to get it cleared. So he wants, uh, us to look into what we can do about these situations.
I'll be glad to.
Do we have a plant ordinance? I didn't think we did.